Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this 25th day of September 2023. I'd like to welcome our guests tonight. We've got with us our CVB Director Tracy McCoy, and a special guest that I would say is with us tonight is Nancy Goll from the Rural Partners Network. And Nancy helps us head up the Pioneer Network that we run for this region. So Nancy, welcome to tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Good to have you. And then, of course, it would be remiss if we didn't highlight that we have our Chief of this as well tonight. Chief Noah, thanks for being here. Okay, with that said, let's move right into tonight's agenda. The first item on the agenda is consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on September 11, 2023.
First, please, reading.
Second. Counsel, we have a first and a second. Motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they were presented in your pack? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Public comment. Nobody has signed up for public comment tonight. Moving right along. The next item is the resolution to approve the DOH construction agreement for the Webster Road sidewalk project at 20%. And so, let me read the resolution. Counsel, as you will remember, we discussed at the last meeting, or not the last meeting, maybe the meeting before, and basically, marching orders were given that we're going to move forward with this sidewalk, or at least the tune that I got out of counsel along with me is that we want to put some sidewalk in. So we're moving forward with the sidewalk project. So the resolution of support. At a meeting at the City of Somersville City Council held on 25th September of 2023, the following order was made and entered. Subject: Transportation Alternative Program Grant Fund Award. For construction of sidewalk improvements to Webster Road. Award Amount: $450,000. Whereby, the City of Somersville authorizes Robert Schaefer, Mayor, to enter into an agreement with the West Virginia Department of Transportation, Division of Highways, for the above referenced project. The City of Somersville authorizes Robert Schaefer, Mayor, to sign any and all documents and papers necessary for the completion of this project. Whereas, the City of Somersville agrees to abide by all rules and regulations pertaining to the TAP grant fund, including the 20% match, the local match, which we already have in this fiscal year budget. The adoption of the foregoing motion having been moved by...
So moved.
We have a first?
Second.
Counsel, you're on your game tonight. I love it. Jim Epling, actually, probably go formal. I'll have to probably read this. It was first by Jim, second by Stevie, whereupon Robert Schaefer, Mayor, declared said motion duly adopted and is therefore adjudged and ordered, and said motion be, and the same is hereby adopted. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. And probably what we'll need to do is put their formal names in there. So if you want to sign yours, if you just want to pass it over here, I'll sign it. That'll be, you got it. And then you can give it over to them. Okay, signed, sealed, and delivered. Okay, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is Somersville Convention and Visitors Bureau Annual Report. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we are delighted to have our Executive Director Tracy McCoy with us tonight. Tracy, welcome.
Greetings, gentlemen. How's everybody this evening?
Good.
Good, good. It is a pleasure to be here on behalf of the Somersville Convention and Visitors Bureau to present the 2022-23 Annual Report. Thank you for your continued encouragement, partnership, and support as we work tirelessly to encourage tourism and attract visitors to our wonderful community. In 2022-23, the CVB Board consisted of the following: Greg Bishop, President; Ashley Wall, Vice President; Stevie LaRose, Fielding and Vice President; Susan James, Secretary; Elizabeth Dix, Jay Burrell; Sam Cowell; David Bridgeway; Elizabeth Anderson; Lindsay Skidmore; Mike Dotson; and Jacqueline Wood. The CVB successfully passed the recreditation application process in 2023, remaining in good standing with the West Virginia Association of CVBs, which qualifies us to continue to receive hotel motel tax funding. We are a continued member in good standing with the West Virginia Hospitality and Travel Association, the Southeast Tourism Society, and the Appalachian Forest Heritage Area. Locally, I continue to represent the CVB as a member of the Nicholas County Potato Festival Committee, the Somersville Area Chamber of Commerce, the Ridgewood Area Chamber of Commerce, the Somersville Mural Committee, the Nicholas County Veterans Memorial Park Board, the Somersville Arena and Conference Center Advisory Board, the Nicholas County School Improvement Council, the Somersville Rotary Club, and the New River Career and Technical College Business Advisory Committee. The CVB's sole source of funding comes from a portion of the hotel motel tax that is collected within the City of Somersville and Nicholas County. At least 40% of our received funding is invested in marketing tourism in Somersville and Nicholas County. The marketing budget continues to primarily target areas at least 50 miles away, focusing mainly on the Mid-Atlantic and the Northeast and Southeast regions, which include West Virginia, Kentucky, Tennessee, North Carolina, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Virginia, DC, and New York. With the passing of the Airbnb bill, we are pleased to see those taxes continuing to be collected and remitted to our local taxing authorities. When I was here to present the annual report last year, I was excited to announce that the 2021 and 2022 Hotel Motel Tax Report numbers showed that we were well on our way to a full recovery by yielding an almost 5% increase from pre-pandemic numbers in '18 and '19. For 2022 and 2023, we saw a hotel motel tax amount across the City of Somersville and all of Nicholas County of $554,762.26, which is a 2.45% increase over the 2021 and 2022 year. Having the newest national park in our backyard has already helped us gain more national and international attention, and we are very confident that being home to West Virginia's newest state park is only going to continue to drive attention our way. Since the Governor's announcement about the new state park, we have been the focus of many news outlets and publications, and as I'm sure you have all seen or heard. With the new City of Somersville Recreation Complex and the Somersville Lake State Park, the CVB is extremely proud and excited to not just witness but be part of those incredible projects. As we all know, change is absolutely required for growth. Our community is undeniably changing and growing for the better every single day. We were very excited to participate in the Governor's visit to unveil the new state park. Many were in attendance, and our community was very well represented at that event. We were also very excited to host Governor Justice and members of the West Virginia Partner Tourism at the Nicholas County Career and Technical Center in the spring, as they made the exciting announcement that all 55 West Virginia counties had signed up to take part in the Hospitality and Tourism Education Program. It was a great opportunity to proudly display the amazingly beautiful, almost heaven West Virginia swings and a cabin from Mountain Lake Campground, which are constructed by Nicholas County students. Throughout the year, dollars earmarked for marketing are placed on various projects, which include print, digital, TV, radio, billboards, social media, social media influencers, and more. You may have seen our ads in West Virginia Living Magazine, USA Today, Ohio Magazine, Travel Taste &amp; Tour, or maybe even the WVU football basketball programs this year, just to name a few. Perhaps you heard us on Lake Country 3WS or Boss Country 97 FM. The CVB continues to participate in the Advertising Co-op program offered seasonally by the West Virginia Department of Tourism. Valuable advertising opportunities are offered through cost sharing. In March of 2023, we received 15,000 copies of the 2023 Somersville Visitors Card. We worked with New South Media on the production of this year's guide, and the positive response has been overwhelming. Everyone has enjoyed the updated look with more vibrant pictures and larger size. Throughout the year, those guides are distributed to local hotels, campgrounds, cabins, attractions, restaurants, stores, trade shows, other CVBs, tourists, and welcome centers all across the state. A digital copy is also available on our website. Each of you has been provided with a copy of the 2023 Somersville Visitors Guide in your giddy bags. Once again, the West Virginia Department of Tourism unveiled a beautiful 2023 West Virginia travel guide, which wonderfully highlights some of what our area has to offer, along with the state as a whole. A copy of the travel guide has also been provided to you in your giddy bags. The CVB continues to have an increasingly strong social media presence, posting on our platforms regularly. We continue to send out newsletters to over 7,000 recipients, highlighting the many exciting things to do in and around our community. We work hard to keep our local community members and tourists aware of upcoming events in the area. The CVB takes great pride in maintaining a positive community presence by hosting, supporting, promoting, sponsoring, or participating in various events throughout the entire county. Some of the events in 2022-23 included the Nicholas County Potato Festival, Mount Nevo St. Patrick's Day Parade, the City of Somersville Thanksgiving Dinner, the Somersville Christmas Store, the Scenic Mountain Triathlon, the Mountain Hater Makers Market, the White House Festival, Music in the Pavilion, City of Somersville Fourth of July Fireworks, Somersville Oktoberfest, Children's Home Society Hook Line &amp; Sinker Fishing Tournament, National Travel and Tourism Week, West Virginia Jeep Fest, the West Virginia Gold Star Mother's Grid Ride, Wally Squadron RC Fly-In, the West Virginia Hellbender Boot Nanny, Cherry River Festival, Tour Around the World Dining Experience, Kirkland Wine and Music Festival, Monster Con, Taste of Nicholas County, US Army Corps of Engineers Birthday Lake Clean-Up Event, and many more. Earlier this year, much time is dedicated to helping the new boards of both the Nicholas County Fair and the Craigsville Ball Festival, as they worked extremely hard on making those events better than ever before. After listening to our tourism partners, we decided to change how we celebrated National Travel and Tourism Week this year. We created and shared videos each day of that week, highlighting each different sector of our local tourism industry. We had Meeting Monday, Trailer Hunt Tuesday, Wayfair Wednesday, Thirsty Thursday, Foodie Friday, and Sleepover Saturday. In addition, Amanda Legg from the West Virginia Department of Tourism came and went to both Ridgewood High School and the Nicholas County High School, where she and I presented to all ninth through 12th graders about considering the tourism industry as a potential career choice for themselves. We concluded the week by holding a student contest tourism awards luncheon, where winners of the art essay and advertisement contests were celebrated. Local business owner Ashley Wall and Amanda Legg of the West Virginia Department of Tourism were our guest speakers. The contest entries were kept on display on the foyer walls within the Arena and Conference Center. As part of our marketing efforts this year, we also executed two different travel influencer visits. The first was a joint effort between the Somersville CVB and Visit Southern West Virginia CVB. We took advantage of an opportunity to have travel influencer Jared Kress visit our community and enjoy a complete outdoor recreation adventure. Some of his experience included lodging at Somersville Lake Retreat and White House, paddle boarding on Somersville Lake, hiking the Lone Point Trail, and at Carnifex Ferry State Park. While here, he also took a tour of Kirkland Winery and Isaiah Morgan Distillery and did a tour of the White House. He enjoyed dining at a variety of our restaurants as well. As required in the contract, Jared provided beautiful pictures and video clips through posts made on his social media pages to reach his 72,400 followers. The second travel influencer trip was done through West Virginia Living Magazine in celebration of West Virginia Day. Two of their own influencers traveled to different areas across the state to encourage everyone to enjoy a West Virginia Day of Fight. While in the Somersville area, the influencers enjoyed lodging in a retro camper at the Somersville Lake Retreat and White House. They enjoyed paddle boarding on the lake, shopping, lunch in Ridgewood, hiking the Lone Point Trail, a tour of the White House, ice cream campfire grill, meals, and shopping in Somersville, and much more. The influencers provided beautiful imagery and short video clips that were highlighted on West Virginia Day through their various social media platforms, as well as in their West Virginia Weekender email box. Also in partnership with the Visit Southern West Virginia CVB, we hosted a visit by the members of Fishing University, as seen on the Outdoor Channel. During their visit, they lodged at one of our hotels and enjoyed filming their fishing experience at Somersville Lake. A very important part of their trip was a visit to Nicholas County High School, where they and our board member Sam Cowell, who is employed by the West Virginia DNR, promoted careers in the outdoors to the students. That segment is supposed to air in January. I just recently had the opportunity to attend the 2023 Governor's Conference on Tourism at Canadian Valley Resort. During Governor Justice's visit, he proudly announced that in 2022, West Virginia experienced its best tourism year yet, with an economic impact exceeding $7 billion. That marks a 17% increase in visitor spending compared to pre-pandemic levels, which is higher than the country's overall rate of just 1% increase. Over $100 million of that was taxable sales generated by vacation rentals last year. Visitors in West Virginia in 2022 totaled more than 30 times the state's population, which in 2022, the population was approximately 1.7 million people. So that's a very big number. Governor Justice also reported that in 2022, there were 53,000 jobs in the West Virginia tourism industry, with one person out of 16 working in the industry, with a $2 billion total annual income. 2022 data more specific to our community will be available soon, and I'll be glad to provide the information to you once I have access to it. As I near my two-year mark, it continues to be an incredible honor to fill the position as Executive Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. The CVB proudly continues its mission to promote our amazing community and to assist with providing outstanding visitor experiences. We are grateful for the support of our community, partners, and dedicated team members. As we look to the future, we remain committed to our vision of making the Somersville area and all of Nicholas County a premier vacation destination. Thank you all for your trust and investment in our work. Working together in unity, our community will continue to grow and thrive. And that concludes my report, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time, or you can feel free to reach out to me directly afterwards as well. Thank you.
Tracy, excellent. Excellent.
I know, it's a lot. Sorry.
As a matter of fact, the only thing I could think of when you were going through all that, what have you been doing this time? No, let me tell you this, and Stevie, you're on that board too. Please carry back to your board, you know, we couldn't be any happier with the way you're engaged with our community, the way you support the City of Somersville, and all of the various activities that you play, and, you know, you're in the same playground, and tremendous, it's just unreal. I mean, you know, we've got the kind of partnership we need, and together, we can make a difference, and we are.
That's right.
So, I can't, and then, and then let me say this, carry back to your board, you need to pay raise?
I am there.
No, Tracy, I tell you, it's a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
You know, your positive can-do attitude makes such a difference, and it's just, you know, it's just any time I have the opportunity to team up with the CVB and work with Tracy, it's a good time. So I appreciate all you do.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you. You got to scoot to another meeting, so we'll...
I do, yes.
Surprise, surprise. Yeah, surprise, surprise. Thanks, Tracy. Okay, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of the annexation ordinance, annexing the 128 acres at the park. It's in two different parcels here, 89.710 and 26.619. And I would ask the city recorder, who has worked this, to read the ordinance, and Gary, I think you can get away with just the first two pages. I don't think you have to read all, you read all that other technology.
The petition?
No, the actual ordinance.
Okay, yeah, actually.
Yeah.
Right here. No, this is it, right here. No, you got it right.
Yeah. Okay. Whereas, West Virginia Code 8-6-4 permits a municipality to, by ordinance, annex additional territory without ordering a vote on the question. If, number one, a majority of the qualified voters of the additional territory file with the governing body a petition to annex, and two, a majority of all freeholders of the additional territory, whether they reside or have a place of business therein or not, file with the governing body a petition to be annexed. And whereas the petitioner, the City of Somersville, is the sole owner of the real estate and adjacent road sites of way situated in Somersville District, Nicholas County, West Virginia, described on Exhibit A attached heretofore and made a part hereof, which is contiguous to the City of Somersville municipal boundary, and it seeks to have this additional territory annexed into the City of Somersville. And whereas the petitioner is the only freeholder within the additional territory, and there are no qualified voters within the area to be annexed, as defined by West Virginia Code And whereas the only qualified voter of the additional territory sought to be annexed has petitioned the City of Somersville to have the additional territory annexed into the municipality by either the freeholder's petition or qualified voter's petition in accordance with West Virginia Code 8-6-4. And whereas the additional territory is contiguous with the municipal boundaries of the City of Somersville. And whereas the petitioner has requested 1369 zoning simultaneous with annexation, which is consistent with the City of Somersville comprehensive plan. Now, therefore, be it in vain that the City Council of the City of Somersville, number one, adopts the recitals set forth above as true and correct, and hereby incorporates them in the ordinance as they've set out in full. Number two, finds and is satisfied that the petition is sufficient in every respect. Number three, directs that Somersville Municipal Code, amended by adding Section 18.014, that the territory described in the petition being situated on the west side of West Virginia, Route 41 in Somersville District, Nicholas County, West Virginia, containing 89.710 acres, 26.619 acres, 8.111 acres, more or less, Access Route Number One and Access Route Number Two, as more particularly described on Exhibit A attached heretofore, shall be annexed in the City of Somersville. Number four, directs the recorder to enter this ordinance upon the city's journal and forward a certificate to that effect to the County Commission of Nicholas County, West Virginia, requesting that the commission enter an order annexing the property described in the petition to the City of Somersville, such that after the date of entry of the County Commission order, the corporate limits of the City of Somersville shall be modified as set forth therein. First reading. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Something like Stevie and Jean.
Yep.
Okay, Counsel, do you have any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Okay, so that's the approval for the petition for annexation. And now we have approval of certificate of annexation. I'll entertain a motion, and actually, these are documents that will work forward with this process. Gary and I had a conversation late afternoon with the city attorney, who said that technically these don't have to be approved, but we've got them on the agenda to do so, so we're just going to roll with it. So approval of the certificate of annexation, Counsel, was in your packet.
So moved.
So we have a first and a second. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Then we've got the approval of annexation order for the Nicholas County Commission. This is a document that's done up that will go to the commission once we've had our second and final reading. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
First and second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. So Counsel, this is the first reading. We're going to be on the agenda for the next meeting. I would encourage you to bring...
I think we skipped the...
Oh, the petition.
Of the petition.
Okay.
We did the first reading, and I think we skipped the petition.
Okay, the approval of the petition. Okay, so we better back up and get that right. I skipped over the approval of petition for annexation. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. Got a first and a second. Any questions? Thanks for catching that, guys. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Okay, so if you could bring these documents back for the next meeting, that would be the final reading before the city recorder then will forward the information to the County Commission for the annexation. The next item on the agenda is recommendation from Planning and Zoning to approve a stop-work order form for our code official. So I'll turn it over to Gary, if he would like to speak to it.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. What this is, is basically is a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning. Just to let you know, our code official needed a document that he had learned under with when he was first learning in Raleigh County or in Beckley, and this is simply just a stop-work order. It's just to be able to enforce everybody, making sure that they have their permits to do so when they're doing construction and things of that nature. Along with this, that we haven't attached to this yet, would be a fine process. There's some more. Typically, a fine would be, and we're not approving this tonight, not the fine portion, but I do want to know that that's something that we'll probably go forward with. Right now, there is no fine, and say, a construction company could come in from Columbus, Ohio, and do some work, and there's, if he doesn't have a permit right now, all we can do is stop him with a stop-work order, then he can come in and pay for his permit. The fine process that others around our area has is typically a small fine in regard to, it's normally double what the permit would be. It's typically the first offense, second when it would be like tripled, and then after that, it might go to quadruple. But it's basically just to make sure that he can present something to the contractors doing the work that says, you're going to have to stop and get you a, get you a permit. So that is what this is. It's more of a formality, but he wanted us to pass this through, let the council see it. If they had any objections to that, please let him know. Right now, our code official's doing an outstanding work, outstanding job of working. He's not, we're not in the business to shut folks down, but he needs to make sure that they understand we have some processes, and it's more of an education for them.
Okay.
Just on buildings?
Yeah, let's, let's do this. Let's put it in the form of a motion, and then we'll do discussion. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Got a first?
Second.
And a second. Okay, not discussion. Jean, what was your question?
Is that just on buildings? Wouldn't be for anything.
Yeah, it's for anything.
Any kind of...
Anything to do with a permit.
Well, it says for building on land.
Yeah.
Well, I guess no permit.
He's got some things outlined there. He can check work is in violation of the zoning ordinance of the City of Somersville, work violates one or more of state laws of the City of Somersville, proper inspections have not been informed, so he can stop them for other things other than just the permit. I guess to answer your question. Yeah.
Yep. Any other questions?
I have an answer table.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll get back to my agenda. Okay, the next item on the agenda would be the authorization to sell police vehicle inventory as listed. Counsel, that list was provided in your packets. We're selling vehicles that are excess and no longer needed or qualified to be in our inventory, and we're also selling vehicles on this list that we seized, and we have orders now from the Circuit Court allowing us to sell the property. So on govdeals.com, the following vehicles will go up for sale on the internet that are property of the City of Somersville. A 2002 Volkswagen Jetta, a 2010 Ford Expedition, a 2011 Chevy Camaro, a 2012 Ford Expedition, and a 2016 Ford Taurus. I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. We got a first and a second. Counsel, do you have any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Recorder, report?
Thank you, Mayor. Planning and zoning meeting, our next planning and zoning meeting will be down here, October 16th at 6 o'clock. We are nearing the end of a, of a tiny home ordinance, and I believe we're very, very close, so feel free to tune in, October 16th, here in the council chambers. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mayor's report. Counsel, I have a few things I'd like to cover here quickly. First is, I just want to kind of highlight some, some activity that the city has been involved in. The city helped the partnership of the National Wild Turkey Federation, the local chapter, Golly River Strepbusters, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the West Virginia DNR, building an archery range at Somersville Lake in the wildlife management area. So we were glad to be a partner in that, and so the city participated, and I'd like to give a little... to give a little shout out to Jeremy Nicholas. He was the one that actually worked in that project on behalf of the city. And then also, the city helped with the cleanup. Again, we've done quite a bit of work out there as the project was developed initially, and now the maintenance and maintaining, but we had some labor that participated in the cleanup of the Whopper, Whopper Pool Will. Whipper?
Whopper.
Okay, is that right?
Yeah.
Whopper Will, there we go. Cemetery, and boy, I hope Charles is not gonna be very happy I didn't pronounce. I can pronounce. Anyway, I want to give a little shout out to Austin Morton. He was the, others in the city participated in that, but Austin was the guy that kind of spearheaded it. So thank you to Austin for his leadership at that activity. I'm excited to announce that I've been working with the leadership at the VA Hospital, and we're bringing our mobile VA clinic back to Somersville, and it's all being done with the spirit of, hopefully, at some point in time, bricks and mortar VA clinic. And so basically, the information I have now as to, for veterans to be aware of that it's coming back, they're hoping that the soft opening of it will be the first week of December. Right now, there are still some collaborating and partnership stuff being worked out with WVU Medicine, so even some of the tests now and stuff can be done through their campus. This mobile, this mobile clinic is gonna kind of focus on things like hypertension and congestive heart failure management, diabetes management, COPD, and other ambulatory issues. It's wide open, and you know, we're really excited about it. So even, they're trying to work out some script stuff too that can be handled potentially through the VA or WVU. So really exciting that we're gonna bring it back initially. It'll be two days a week, and then as soon as they can get the traffic up, it'll go back to a four-day-a-week clinic. So we're really excited about that. Couple of other things, council, I'd like you to mark your calendars for. Back by popular demand, and it really was a good show last year, Oktoberfest, this year they're calling it Spooktoberfest, is gonna take place October 28th, downtown Somersville. That's where we showcase all of, and all and any of them that want to come, all of them are invited, the amazing breweries throughout our state. And so that's gonna take place on October 28th, downtown Somersville, 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. So stay tuned for more information on that activity. And then the other thing of it is, Tracy, the city with the CBB, Gold Star Mothers Music and Ice Cream Social, they're doing what, they're doing again what they did last year, a bridge ride with the Gold Star Mothers. This year, they're doing activities on Friday, and then the ride is actually Saturday. So downtown Somersville on October 13th, from 7:30 to 9:30 p.m., we will welcome the Gold Star Mother riders to downtown Somersville. We'll have entertainment and an ice cream social. I will tell you that I was also contacted from Senator Manchin's office today from Mara Boggs, and really excitingly, if, if things work out in DC, then we get a budget and keep the government open, we're also going to that very same day at 2:30, we're gonna welcome Senator Manchin and his 100-plus motorcycle riders to downtown Somersville. Many of you will remember, he was a part of a ride for many, many years that made a stop in Somersville. So in an exciting way, he's firing his ride back up, and they're sponsoring and supporting the same effort, Gold Star Mothers, but they're not riding together. His ride is separate than their ride. But his ride's gonna take place on, on the 13th, and today they reached out to me, hearing that we were having activities in the evening. We're gonna put them on in the daytime for that bunch as well. And real excitingly, they're gonna give, his group of riders are gonna present a check to the Gold Star Mothers here when they stop at 2:30. So I want to put a notice out to citizens, we will shut down the street in front of the city building and the entire pavilion parking lot on that day, because we couldn't let vehicles get in there and anticipate, and with these motorcycle rides, they say 2:30, it could be 2, or it could be 3. You just gotta be ready when they come. And so parking that many motorcycles, the evening ride will not be an issue. Obviously, our traffic has slowed way down, but the welcoming Joe Manchin and his riders will be a challenge in the daytime. So chief, we got some things logistically we need to work out with this, okay? Okay, that's all I have. Any questions? Okay, council, any council reports? Council comments? Okay, great meeting. All those in, I guess we need, I guess we're gonna get the motion before I say, all those in favor vote. We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We got a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries.